All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Taylor. I'm the associate planner here at the city of East Point. Ms. Fuller, please ignore the email that I just sent over to you. We do have one attendee here for this evening, but I do want to thank everyone for coming to our CZIM this evening and give me one second to share my screen. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. So I do want to thank everyone for being here again today. The date is February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the beginning time for this meeting is six thirty. Before we get into the actual meeting, I do want to go over the actual purpose of the CZIM meeting. So our CZIM is our community zoning information meeting, and it's established for presentations of all applications, regardless if it's a rezoning, zoning modification variance, or special use permit, as well as subdivisions for minor and preliminary flats and other related land use petitions. So we have items listed one through four, and so we want to make sure that we allow the applicants opportunity to present their applications, allow citizens of East Point opportunities to review the applications as submitted, as well as ask questions and express any preliminary concerns, provide a standard meeting time and location, and allow issues and concerns to be addressed in a public forum. These are a few ground rules. The most important ones are to be respectful during the question and answer time, as well as to mute your mic when you are not speaking, to allow everyone to address their questions and concerns, and we will leave all questions for the end of the presentation. So I believe all of our applicants are here this evening. The first item is item number one, case number two zero two three RZ dash zero zero three dash one two. The applicant is BRG Consulting. The location is a nineteen ten Phillips Avenue. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from R one A Urban Residential District to R three multi-family district to develop a new multi-family residential building. The applicant is also seeking a concurrent variance for relief from section ten dash twenty sixty-five ED rear yard setback to reduce the twenty-five foot development standard to sixteen feet and eight inches to utilize the existing foundation. The case type again is a variance, I'm sorry, is a rezoning with a concurrent variance. You can see aerial of the property here. The current zoning of the properties are one A. And the future land use of the property is redevelopment neighborhood, and I believe Ms. Fuller is here. And you also have the capabilities to share your screen for your presentation this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening to everybody who's here and to anyone who might be reviewing the recording. After the fact, if you'll give me just a moment, I'll actually queue up a very brief presentation and open up to any questions and comments that you might have. So just a few moments while I pull up that presentation on one screen and then connect you, the audience on my second screen. You should be viewing the presentation now, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I actually want to, for my benefit, if you'll allow me another moment or two, pull up the application in front of me on the screen to reference for any questions.
No problem.
And I'm pulling that application up now that was submitted. Okay. Again, very simple request. My name is Whitney Fuller, BRG Consulting. I actually represent a client who owns this property, who purchased this property, has built other missing middle typologies. And missing middle, if you are not familiar with that term, is the concept of urban neighborhoods like this neighborhood and Center Park that may have vacant properties or have underutilized properties that can accommodate a missing middle building typology that might be something like a multifamily. One or are more likely two, four, or a small multifamily building that's missing from our single-family neighborhoods and serves a need for people who aren't able to afford that single-family price point or don't have the need in terms of their living space for the traditional type of single-family or larger multifamily that we find being developed in larger apartment buildings that start at a hundred units or more. So that is the history of this developer that I'm representing, D and M Associates. The property is located in Center Park Avenue at nineteen ten Phillips Avenue. Approximately two thousand A, the structure that you see screenshot it at the top right hand of the screen was existing. It looks like another small multifamily building surrounding this property. There are other smaller multifamily duplexes for the most part on the street. In two thousand eight, this property was demolished, this structure rather, was demolished. And what remains today is a concrete slab that the owner would like to utilize in their future redevelopment. Right now, they're in the pre-development process of planning what could go there and for that reason, we're asking for a variance to utilize the existing concrete slab that's on the structure right now that would reduce some burden in terms of construction construction on the site by using the slab that's already there. Similarly, it would reduce some environmental burden by utilizing the concrete structure that's already there. And it would conform more to the aesthetics of the existing neighborhood, the existing structures that already exist across the street and to the right of this property by utilizing that slab. And the rezoning from R one to R three is to accommodate for multi-family as opposed to single-family. Again, it doesn't depart very significantly from what already exists. The owner is looking to build back approximately twelve units. And that is still under development, again, as they're in the pre-development phase, working through architectural plans. And some of those plans depend on the ability to rezone and obtain a variance from the side, or I think, excuse me, the rear yard setback as stated in the application by Taylor. So these are just some of the steps that was actually presented to the neighborhood Center Park Community Association back in December. You all are familiar with this application process, so I won't go forward with that. But we did talk to the neighborhood, like I said, in December, initiated conversation with the planning office at that time as well, initiated our application, and eventually turned it in in February. And so we're looking forward to proceeding with the rest of the hearings with you and the city council and the zoning board. That concludes my presentation. Is there anything that I didn't cover at a high level that I should go into more detail on?
Ms. Fuller, we're going to save questions for the end. I think you did a great job for your presentation, but we do have two applicants, I'm sorry, two attendees here as well that may have some questions for you in the end.
Thank you very well.
The next application that we have this evening is item number two, twenty-seven forty-one Church Street. The case number is two zero two four RZ dash zero zero one dash zero one. The applicant is Lizzie's Cigar Boutique and Tasting Room. The zoning of the property is CR Commercial Redevelopment. The request, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from RCR Commercial Redevelopment to MXCI Mixed Use Commercial Industrial District to establish a cigar smoke shop. The current zoning does show that the, that it's commercial redevelopment, and it is located in the downtown overlay district. The future language designation for this property is traditional urban neighborhood, and I believe we have the applicant here as well.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hello? Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ramona Fenner, and I'm the owner of Lizzie's Boutique, Cigar Boutique and Tasting Room. And we're planning to, it's going to be located at twenty-seven forty-one Church Street in East Point, Georgia. We are a full-service craft cocktail lounge with a curated selection of tobacco products. We want to provide retail entertainment options to the citizens of the Tri-Cities community in the metro Atlanta area. We are committed to becoming a viable and invested partner that serves this community. We want to partner with the city of East Point to assist in making it a destination location to live, work, and play, as well as increase the visibility and viability of the area. Just one second, we gotta get to the next slide. Okay. Lizzie's Cigar Boutique and Tasting Room will provide the Tri-Cities area in more specific, specifically the revitalized East Point Downtown Corridor with the unique community cocktail and cigar experience. Lizzie's is a social, educational, and cultural experience for mature adults. Our goal is to introduce premium tobacco products, fine spirits, and craft cocktails in an environment that fuses with the culture, energy, and diversity of the new East Point. Are you ready? Okay. Our goal is to maintain the historic East Point aesthetics combined with a private speakeasy-like social atmosphere. Lizzie's aims, aims to provide a high-quality customer experience through beautiful interiors, unique product offerings, and high-level customer service. So what is Lizzie's? Lizzie's is a coworking space for remote workers. Craft cocktail lounge where people can enjoy after work, a place where people can enjoy a premium cigar, a place where people can network, converse, and gather with new and old friends. And as well, we want to promote, you know, having great meetings for maybe after-work meetings and anything like that. If you have a place to meet, if you need a place to meet, we want you to use Lizzie's as that place. This, you ready? Okay, the city of East Point has plans, has plans to develop the downtown area with hotels, restaurants, and other social activities. East Point Commons are, East Point Commons. Our goal is to be an active part of the development and growth of the city. Whether you are a remote worker catching a flight, attending an industry conference, Lizzie's will, we real, Lizzie's will redefine socialization through the ultimate lounge experience. We have adaptable space seamlessly transitioned from indoor to outdoor, and between night and day, we provide something for everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your presentation. And we will save all our questions for the end. The next item that we have on the agenda will be a tax amendment. The case number is two zero two four T A dash zero zero one dash zero two. The applicant is the city of East Point. This will be citywide. And the request is for us to have an ordinance to adopt the Metro Water District Water Efficiency Code requirements per action item water supply, water conservation eight to the zoning and development chapter three building regulations, article D plumbing code.
Hi, Taylor.
Hi.
Do you want me to expound? You kind of covered a lot of it, but I'll say a little bit.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Smith, the director of the Planning and Community Development Department. Good evening, everyone that's on the call and everyone that may be watching the call later on. So this particular efficiency code impacts our plumbing ordinance that we have, and because the city of East Point is a part of the local government of the Atlanta Regional Commission, and because we are a local government within the Metro Water District, we are required to adopt the two thousand and two Water Resource Management Update. And so this is something that all communities in the fifteen county region are required to adopt. It's called the Metro Water District Water Efficiency Codes, and it's a requirement that we will all have to implement into our building codes. It deals with water supply and conservation. It is an action item. It's for all local governments, as I stated before. It deals with diff- different aspects of plumbing. Some of it is materials. But it basically is a local amendment to the Georgia State Minimum Standards for Plumbing Codes. And we are going to be bringing this through the basic and zoning process, which requires us to have this meeting and be a part of the community zoning information meeting that everyone else is having to go through when they make petitions for zoning amendments. We'll also have to go before the planning commission's work session and provide an overview of this requirement from the Atlanta Regional Commission for all local governments within the Metro Water District to our planning commission at our work session the second Tuesday of next month. We also will have to come back before our planning commission for the regular scheduled meeting, which is the third Thursday of next month to provide an overview and for planning commission to make a recommendation to our council. And after that, we'll have to go before city council at their work session in March, in April, and along to the city council regular meeting, which is the third Monday of the month, and for us, it's going to be in April. That's pretty much all that I would like to say about it. If anyone is interested in knowing more, we can definitely post the, the two thousand twenty-two Water Resource Management Plan that was adopted. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. So now we'll open it up for questions from any of the attendees that we hear this evening. I have one question in the chat, and this is from the Sumner Park Neighborhood Association. And the question is, what are the anticipated operating hours for the proposed cigar smoke lounge? You're muted.
Oh, Monday through Friday, twelve to twelve. And then on the weekends, two. Twelve to two.
Saturday and Sunday?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Friday and Saturday, not Sunday. So Sunday closes at ten.
Okay, so Monday through Friday, twelve PM to twelve AM?
Monday through Thursday, twelve to twelve for set, for Friday and Saturday from twelve to two, and then Sunday from twelve to ten.
Thank you. Another question from the Sumner Park Neighborhood Association is, does the proposal for the cigar smoke lounge include an expectation for our outdoor patio space?
Yes. We have a front porch and a patio in the back.
All right, let's see. If you all would like to keep messaging questions, I read them aloud. I will go to the next person that I see, which is Ms. Lisa Green Cloughton. If you're, if you have any questions for any of the applicants this evening, feel free to unmute.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. The only question I have at this point is, I was wondering, since there is, I guess, a consideration for an outdoor space, a patio space, will there be any any plans for like a buffer zone between the property where the cigar, the lounge will be and adjacent homeowners?
Yes, there is a buffer zone. I mean, because there is a driveway behind us, so the patio is directly connected to the home. So it's not, it's, it's very small, so it's about what? About thirty feet long and maybe three, four, five feet wide?
Thank you. There's another attendee, phone number ending in three, five, four, three. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to unmute. Sumner Park Neighborhood Association has another question. The question is, how can residents submit formal comments related to the proposed rezoning? So I believe that question would be to staff, and you can feel free to email us any questions or more comments related to the proposed zoning. We also have a public hearing, not only a planning commission, but also in city council as well, whether you are for or against the, any of the zoning petitions as well. And that information will be posted on the city's website as well as the social media outlets. And if you would like to email us, the email is zoning@eastpointcity.org, and I'll respond to your question with that. The dates for the public hearing, I'll share my screen just to make sure that everyone has them. Give me one second.
Okay, good. Can I share something for the Sumner, Sumner Park, for everybody? Yes, but what we wanted to let everyone know is that we're not going to be like a nightclub or anything like that. It's more like a coffee house, you know, a quiet environment for adults. It won't be, you know, like a party back there or anything like that. It's just going to be for socializing and, and whatnot. So it's not going to be like a club at all. It's an environment for mature adult, adults.
Thank you. In the question regarding the dates of the public hearing, all of the meeting dates are here. So the application deadline was February second. The community zoning information is being held today at February thirteenth. The planning commission work session is March fourteenth. The public hearing will be March twenty-first at seven PM. The city council work session will be April eighth, and the city council public hearing will be April fifteenth, and that meeting starts at six thirty. So the planning commission meetings are held virtually, and the city council meetings are held at City Hall at twenty-seven fifty-seven East Point Street. Another question for Lizzie's Cigar Boutique Lounge is, is there ample parking available?
Well, we've been working on getting parking, and we have permission from the church, the church that's a block away to use their parking lot as well as the public park, and then it's right across the street as well.
All right, do we have any more questions for this evening? Sumner Park Neighborhood Association would like to know, what is the anticipated patron capacity for Lizzie's?
Until we get a certificate of occupancy, we have no idea yet how, what the capacity is. Yeah. Hopefully by springtime, early summer, we'll know, but we don't have the answer to that yet.
Thank you. All right, I do not see, I see one more question. And the question is, what is the difference in allowable uses between CR and MXCI categories? Now, really, that question is for staff. All right, is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So the CR district is our commercial redevelopment, well, our commercial redevelopment district. And in this district, there is, it's intended to facilitate and encourage innovative, functional, aesthetically pleasing, and creative design development of the most compatible and desirable mixed-use patterns of retail, commercial services, institutional, and residential land use, along with primary pedestrian and public transit-oriented development. And so a list of the permitted uses are here, such as art galleries, artisan workshops, banks, barber shops, brew pubs, child learning centers, as well as churches, country ends, food stores, funeral homes, hotels, museums, nightclubs, offices, and pet shops, and a plethora of other retail facilities as well. In the CR zoning district, you are allowed to have multifamily permitted on the second story and above. So the first floor will be for retail, and they have amenity packages as well. And then, once you go a little lower, you'll see that some of these are permitted through administrative permit, and they're listed here, such as club, film production, food trucks, recreational court, private. And then you have three uses that are allowed through special use permit only, which will be allowed with approval of city council, which will be amateur radio antenna to exceed the administrative permit height, bed and breakfast, and outdoor event large. Our MXCI zoning district is created, was created as a Our M X C I zoning district is created, was created as a buffer um for the industrial and commercial uses. So you will see a few of them within the city of East Point. And this zoning district was intended to encourage flexible, innovative, and creative concepts inside planning and efficient use of land to provide a combination of commercial and light industrial uses. So you'll see a lot of mixed developments that are defined in this project, in the projects that are contained through or more of the following uses, which will be residential, commercial, office, institutional, industrial, and conservation. So in this zoning district, you're allowed all of the permitted uses within C one, C two, C L, C R, and M X I. Um there is a bit of a difference of the commercial uses that are allowed. Um in this zoning district, you will also see banks, bookstores, hotels, movie theaters, gyms, museums, grocery stores, offices, tasting rooms, cigar smoke shops. Um and there are other special use permits and administrative permits as well. And if that doesn't answer your question, I'll feel free to ask a little more now elaborate for you.
I, I can elaborate a little bit and say that the reason why we're asking for zoning is because we want to allow smoke on the inside, to be able to smoke cigars on the inside and not on the outside. The C R uh does not, zoning does not allow that, so we want the the mixed use so that it can allow smoking on the inside.
Thank you.
Um who was just speaking about smoking on the inside and outside?
Lizzie's cigar.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, um can you expound on that? I'm, I'm a little versus, I'm just trying to understand what you were saying. I didn't quite understand where you're making a difference between smoking on the inside and outside.
Well, commercial redevelopment doesn't allow smoking on the inside. Yes, cigar shops at all.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
That's what it is, the difference. Sorry.
Yeah.
Wasn't clear.
Thank you. Um I do not see any more questions for this evening. If we have any questions, any more questions or concerns, feel free to unmute or let me know in the chat. If not, I'll pull up the screen for the meetings for the planning commission as well as the city council meetings as well. And as you can see, they're highlighted. So these are the meetings that we will see you all at next, which will be our March fourteen to twenty twenty-four meeting. This will be our planning, the zoning work session. You are expected to be at all of the meetings that are on this calendar. And again, our city council meetings are held in person at twenty seven fifty seven East Point Street. Ms. Fuller?
Understand you said the city council meetings are in person, the zoning work session and the planning commission, are those virtual?
Yeah, so all of your planning commission meetings will be held virtually via Zoom, and your city council meetings will be in person.
Will we receive a link or should we go to the website?
You'll receive the link the day before the meeting. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good.
Perfect. Oh, and I do have another attendee that is here. So I'll ask if they have any questions. Melanie, do you have any questions for this evening?
Um no, I'm sorry. I, I joined a little bit later, but um I'll, I'll definitely reach out if I have any questions afterwards.
No worries. And the C Z I M meeting will be on our YouTube channel as well. And so if you, they're coming a little late, you'll have the opportunity to watch it tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. I do want to thank everyone for coming this evening, and thank you so much, and we'll see you all soon.